Good evening to you all and welcome to the Monday, April 22nd, 2019 meeting of Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you're all here with us this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda as revised and presented in our green folders.
All right, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. We do have a few special proclamations this evening, and so I would like to start the first one with Operation Earthwatch and the student recognition. Mr. Shields, are you presenting that tonight?
I don't.
It says I am, but...
They were supposed to be here. It was Kate Walkers, and she's in your department, so that's why you're on it. So they may show up.
Okay.
But there was supposed to be a group here.
All right, should we hold that off till our group arrives and do the recognition?
Maybe they do the others and come back. This is the first year that Operation Earthwatch has shifted over to the nonprofit, so maybe do the other proclamations and then come back.
All right, why don't we go ahead and do that, and then we'll come back, and hopefully they'll be able to join us by then. Our second proclamation is declaring May 5th through the 11th as Public Service Recognition Week, and Mr. Snyder, I believe, is going to do the honors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation, whereas Americans are served by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, and these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation moving, whereas every day of the year and all hours of the day and night, City of Falls Church, city and school employees provide critically important public services to citizens of the City of Falls Church and the region, and whereas the City Council and Mayor ask the public to join them in recognizing and celebrating the cities and schools' dedicated employees for their work in providing essential services to the public, including promoting public safety, providing a world-class public education, hosting and promoting special events, enriching our lives with great books and library services, maintaining our streets and sidewalks, providing vital stormwater and sanitary sewer services, developing recreation and athletic programs, caring for the elderly and persons in need, promoting fairness and inclusion in housing and economic opportunity, promoting well-planned, high-quality development, caring for our tree streams and natural environment, and providing personal and responsive customer service, and whereas city and school employees always go the extra mile to meet the needs of Falls Church citizens.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through the 11th, 2019, as Public Service Recognition Week, and thank all public servants for contributing to making the City of Falls Church such a great place to live, work, learn, and play. Mr. Shields, is there anyone in particular who's going to accept this proclamation, or is it all of our employees?
Well, Mayor Tarter and members of the Council, thank you all for this proclamation. It means a lot to all of the city employees. The Falls Church is really all about public service through and through, and so I would like to invite everybody in the audience who is engaged in public service, either as a city employee, or a federal employee, or a state employee, or as a contributor to the life of the city, to come forward to accept this proclamation together.
All right. Let's bring the whole audience down. Come on.
That's okay. All right, so...
You want me to take it?
No, it's okay. So, Counsel, if you can go on the edges.
Counsel out?
Counsel out.
Can we just come out to the front?
Yeah, I'll phone it myself then.
Why don't we all just come out front?
Yeah, just come out front, that might be best.
Should we kneel like that?
You do you. All right, and then... Yep, 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 yep. That's okay. There we go. I got it, you got it? All right.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you to you all. Our next proclamation is regarding Arbor Day, and Mr. Lickenhouse, I believe, is going to do the honors. Mr. Lickenhouse?
Whereas the City of Falls Church is known for the beauty of its trees and plantings, and whereas trees release oxygen into our atmosphere while reducing carbon dioxide, provide habitat for wildlife, reduce the erosion of soil by wind and water, filter pollutants before they reach our waterways, and reduce heating and cooling costs by moderating temperatures, and whereas the City of Falls Church has been designated a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 41 consecutive years, and whereas in 1892, the first observance of Arbor Day in the Commonwealth of Virginia took place in Falls Church at the Old Jefferson School, organized by the Village Improvement Society, predecessor of the present Village Preservation and Improvement Society, and whereas each April since 1974, Falls Church has held a citywide celebration of Arbor Day, encouraging citizens to plant and care for trees, and whereas the Loblawli Pine, Punist Heda, has been selected as the Tree of the Year by Falls Church Tree Commission, and whereas Falls Church wishes to continue to manage its urban forests for the current and future environmental, social, and economic benefits it can provide.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim, in recognition of the... Wait a second. I'm sorry. Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, in recognition of the value that our community places on trees, to hereby proclaim April 27th, 2019, as Arbor Day in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to join in the celebration of that day. Is there anyone in the audience, Tree Commission? All right, come on, come on down. If there's anything you'd like to say, we'd certainly like to hear it.
All right, our next proclamation...
Wait, 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 wait. We will be celebrating Arbor Day at Berman Park, followed by tree planting and then tree planting.
All right, thanks much. We'll put that on our calendars. Our next proclamation is regarding Municipal Clerks Week, and Vice Mayor Conley is going to do the honors.
I am. Whereas the Office of... Okay, let's start over. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government in every part of the world, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is one of the longest existing public offices dating back to biblical times, and whereas municipal clerks provide the professional link between citizens and local governing bodies, whereas municipal clerks pledge to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Falls Church City Clerk's Office is charged with maintaining the integrity and clarity of the legislative process and preserving the history of the City Council's actions for future generations, and whereas the City Clerk's Office works with every city department to ensure transparency and clear communication between and amongst citizens, the City Council, and staff about legislative issues that are important to the life of the city, and whereas the City Clerk's Office continually strives to improve the administration of the affairs of the City of Falls Church through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their local, state, and international professional organizations, and whereas 2019 marks the 50th anniversary of Municipal Clerk's Week, which will be celebrated by members of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks throughout the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 5th through the 11th, 2019, as Municipal Clerk's Week in the City of Falls Church, and recognize the contributions of the City Clerk's Office to the city.
Thank you, Counsel, and I will forward this to the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. They'll be very pleased with it. Thank you.
All right, do you want to come down and receive this proclamation on behalf of the Municipal Clerk of Falls Church? All right, and special thanks to our clerk, who's done a fantastic job. We greatly appreciate all the great work you do and your friendliness and your attitude, and I think, I hope, our community as a whole does as well, so, job well done. All right, and our last proclamation is proclamation declaring May 9th as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, and Ms. Hardy is going to do the honors.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the United States Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration has declared May 9th to be National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, to shine a national spotlight on the importance of caring for every child's mental health, and to reinforce the message that positive mental health is essential to a child's healthy development, and whereas Falls Church City Public Schools provides school-based mental health support services via their counselors, school psychologists, social workers, and behavior specialists to pre-K through 12th grade students and their families, and whereas FCCPS offers the nationally-recognized youth mental health first aid course, which provides certification as first responders for both staff and parents respond when students are having mental health concerns. Each person who is certified wears a green lanyard as a symbol to our students that this person is there to help you during a time of emotional need, and whereas the Fairfax Falls Church Community Service Board create a new heads-up drop-in program for teens between ages 14 to 17, and offers a safe and healthy space for teens to share emotional challenges and learn effective ways to cope and handle stress, and whereas collaboration with the National Alliance for Mental Health Illness, Northern Virginia has enabled 178 parents and families to receive parent support services with funds provided through the Virginia Department of Behavioral and Developmental Services and the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and whereas a new community events and resources calendar pertaining to children's mental health has been posted online on the Fairfax County website under CSV, Children, Youth, and Families, and is available to the entire community, and whereas a new learning collaborative between Healthy Minds Fairfax, George Mason University, and Inova Health Systems has enabled 438 local mental health professionals to receive specialized training in research and evidence-based treatments for child and youth mental health issues. This emphasis on training will help ensure the highest quality services for children and adolescents across the City of Falls Church.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 9th, 2019, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize this day by directing their thought towards our children's mental health and well-being. All right, thank you, welcome, Ms. Vincent.
Thank you. I'm joined here by Robin Borum. Shall I start over? I'm joined here by Robin Borum, who is one of the school social workers, and we'd like to tell you that the purpose of Children's Mental Health Awareness Day is to increase public awareness about the needs of children with mental health issues and severe emotional disturbance, and to encourage those who need help to seek help. Awareness Day is meant to raise awareness of the efficacy of community-based mental health and substance use services for children, youth, young adults, and their families, to demonstrate how children's mental health initiatives promote positive youth development, recovery, and resilience, and to show how children, youth, and young adults with mental health or substance use disorders can flourish in their communities. And Elisa Mock, who's one of the members of the Human Services Advisory Council, couldn't be here today and much more eloquent than I am, wrote, "The issue of children's mental health knows no boundaries and certainly affects children in our city and schools. Breaking the stigma and raising awareness makes our kids stronger and could even save lives." Thank you.
Thanks very much. Did you have anything you want to add?
Oh, no, thank you. We wrote... Thank you very much.
Sounds good. I don't know if you guys want to come forward for a photo. I don't seem to have the proclamation. I don't know if there was one printed out.
No, we're going to forward one. We moved today, and we're short on printers.
All right, well, let's just give you a hearty thanks. How about that?
Just hold this. No one zoom in.
All right, should we go ahead and defer Operation Earthwatch until the kids are here? It seems like that might...
They're actually scheduled for May 13th. I got a text about that, so I was just prepping them.
We're going to take that proclamation back.
I know. Can I leave?
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to Odes of Office to New Board and Commission Members. Are there any to administer tonight?
I don't believe so.
All right, let's move on to Receipt of Public Comment. Do you want to start with a summary of written comments?
I do. We had two comments. George Gilbert, 330 Little Falls Street urged Counsel to reject any additional tax relief, and Sean Dakin asked Counsel to grant the additional tax relief.
Okay. So now we're going to go ahead and move on to the Receipt of Public Comment. If you'd like to speak tonight, we'd be delighted to hear from you. We'd ask that you fill out a speaker slip similar to this one at the back of the room and hand it to the clerk, who in turn will hand it to me. If you could, when you get to the podium, please keep your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. You're able to speak now if you'd like, or you can wait till the item you're here for is called. It's up to you. At the present, I only have one speaker slip. You're welcome to come forward before I butcher your name, but our first speaker at this time, and only speaker at this time, is Ina Navazaliski. Okay, all right, all right, I'm impressed with myself.
I'm impressed.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, I'm Ina Navazaliskis. I don't know if you can all hear this. Okay. I live at 200 Garden Court here in the city, just around the corner, and I'm here to speak for the tax relief for seniors in the future. I'm not there yet, but when I read in Falls Church News Press that there is a question of expanding, deferral, or abatement, then I was very interested, because my situation is such that I am a single mother, raised my daughter. I will be retiring in three years, 11 months, and eight days, but nobody's counting, and I was really worried about the tax increases. Now, whether it's the rate that has increased, or the assessment that has increased, the bottom line is the taxes have really gone up, particularly in this year, and one in my situation can't swallow that much too often, and when you're going to be on a fixed income, it makes a huge difference. At the moment, my mother also lives in the city. She has a condo, and she has a very modest income, and she qualifies for tax relief, which I can tell you for someone who's at her age of 92, has made a huge, huge difference. So I was told that this topic is going to be discussed tonight, and I was urged to come, and I've never done this before, so, but I feel strongly about it, and I would like my voice to be heard on this issue. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and your voice was heard, so thanks for coming out. We greatly appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? If not, again, you're welcome to speak when the item is heard. Just fill out the speaker slip at that time. Let's move on, then, to the Annual Report of the Architectural Advisory Board. Come on down. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, welcome. My name is Jim Way. I'm the Chair of the Architectural Advisory Board. First off, I think you all have in your materials the Annual Report that was put together, so thank you very much, Jeff, for working on that. I don't think it's any sort of an understatement to note that there's been a great deal going on in our little city. I'm pleased that the AAB has been able to contribute to the successful growth we've seen through our input on all of these new developments and updated properties. Excuse me, I have a bit of cold... You have the materials, so I won't read those word for word, but I just did want to quickly highlight a couple of things. First, our purpose, the key role we play, is to encourage the use of land with respect to economics and harmony with the existing built environment. One thing we've worked on in our recommendations to you all is to find a good balance of acknowledging what we see as key elements of the city's identity with the desire to have attractive and quality design. Over the years, and including 2018, I think we've done a pretty good job of that. Second, I'd like to talk about our members. We've been very fortunate to have a great set of volunteer board members who put in a not insignificant amount of time to their work on the board. I'd like to personally thank Vice Chair Sharon Friedlander, Charles Anderson, Diane Duggan, Phil Osburn, and Victor Wong for their contributions throughout 2018. Unfortunately, both Charles Anderson and Diane Duggan had to step off the board, but we did just get a new member in Albert Patichi, who is already providing some excellent input and insight. So on the participation side, I think we're doing great and happy with everybody we have. Third, and finally, a few highlights of the things we looked at just in 2018. As you can see, on the sign permits, we not only look at commercial entities like Target and all the... But we also look at the municipal work, like the Howard Herman Park sign and things like that, and we're really happy to help out with that part of it. And then, we also looked at several site improvements, including the aforementioned Aldi Founder's Row and Mary Riley Stiles' library, and we're very happy to say that we're participating in lots of the other big developments going on. I'd also like to just add here that we are very appreciative of the actions taken by you all, the City Council, and city staff in inviting us to provide input in the very early stages of these projects. We definitely feel that by providing our thoughts early on, we, along with the other boards and you all, we see a smoother process through the whole life of the project, and I think we wind up with a better end product. So we definitely appreciate your allowing us to be a part of that at the very beginning. So with that, I'd like to once again thank my fellow AAB members, city staff, including Jeff and Akita Rousey, and the City Council. Thank you for your time.
All right, well, thank you for yours and your service to our community. Let's just see before you run off there. Hang on a second. See if there are any questions or comments from folks here on City Council. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Mr. Duncan?
I feel a vacuum. I feel like... Just thank you, Jim, for all the hard work you guys do. Your committee meetings are the ones I really am most informed by, I think, because it's not an area that I have a lot of expertise in, and you all really drill down. I remember, I think Ross was actually at the hearing on Founder's Row, which was a three-and-a-half-hour marathon. If anybody ever believed that the developer did not, you know, get held up to the highest standard, then all they had to do was attend that meeting, and the outcomes, I think, are evident all around the city, as you say. Things look new, but they look good, and they fit in, and I just want to thank you all for the extra mile, and extra mile beyond that that you go to when we have these big developments. Look forward to hearing from you, obviously, about the Falls Church Gateway Project in the next year and a half or so. That'll be a great project for you guys to dig into, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'd also like to add my thanks. I tell you, architecture matters. It's, you know, it's the difference between a good project and a great project, the subtle details of a project, the materials that are used. It all matters, it all counts, and you can look through the city, and there's some that have, you know, really great architecture, materials, and function, and others maybe not so much. So I think we're raising the bar throughout the city on the design and the way projects work and they look, and so I thank you for all the great work you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, well, listen, I look forward to hearing more from you all.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Are there any... I guess, I don't see your... Oh, there it is. Any Counsel requests before we move on? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first off, before I get to the request, because it will dovetail, Happy Earth Day, everybody. It's April 22nd. I have my Earth Day shirt on. On that note, earlier during the Arbor Day proclamation, we mentioned kind of a big weekend of activities. Besides Arbor Day celebration on Saturday, there's also a habitat cleanup at Crosman Park, I want to make sure people are aware of, and I also posted about several kind of bike infrastructure kind of projects happening across the city. So there's detours posted for the WOD, kind of new bridge over 29, and so there's big T-tours through the city and through Arlington, and I know we've talked about Bike Share grand opening in May. Is that on track, Mr. Shields?
It is.
Terrific.
So the grand opening on May 8th?
Great. And while we're on kind of the discussion about alternative modes of transportation and Earth Day, I had heard through the grapevine that there's actually some controversy over the motorized scooters in Falls Church, so I wanted to see whether we could have a discussion about that or an update in a future meeting, because I've heard that we've actually banned them in Falls Church, which was pretty concerning to me, because I think that they have a place in our kind of use of, or promotion of, alternative modes of transportation as a good car alternative. And I think what we've been talking about needing is kind of a policy on how to use scooters and safety best practices, and banning them altogether seems kind of swinging the pendulum too far. So I wanted to request whether we can have a future work session topic on scooters and the best practices we talked about.
Well, when we... As the Council's aware, on the work plan is to do a scooter policy review, and we plan to come to the Council this summer with recommendations on policy in this area. When the question was just asked of various city officials, what does the code speak about scooters today? The determination of the zoning administrator, among others, was the code doesn't address it, but it does prohibit certain uses, commercial uses, without specific approval. And scooters would be a commercial use, and so under that reading of the zoning ordinance, it's not allowed use. So that is the state of play right now. You know, there have been a few scooters that have shown up in town. It hasn't been the situation that you've seen in Alexandria or in other places where all of a sudden there's just a huge unloading of trucks of scooters. That has not happened. Those other cities have found it helpful to have codes that don't allow it so that it can be regulated appropriately. And so we're looking at what our peer jurisdictions are doing. There are really good models out there, and we think that we'll be able to adopt the best practices.
Great. So until we have that discussion, we're not allowing the commercial usage of scooters in the city?
We're not actively enforcing it. I think we're reserving the ability to enforce it if we had essentially kind of a nuisance drop of scooters that were causing a problem. I think that would be my best interpretation of the way we'd handle it right now.
Because I do think they're organically showing up in the city, and I think, you know, they have... They serve a useful purpose, especially as we kind of connect people to the metro stations or other transit, so I do think we should figure out a way to make them happen here, but safely.
That's right.
And then on that note, there were actually two high-profile pedestrian and cyclist deaths in DC, so we're talking about safety, and so you know where I'm going to go with this, is sidewalks and crosswalks. Any update on our Virginian park sidewalk, given the regional attention on pedestrian safety?
Yeah. So we are proceeding with that. I'll need to get back with you on the exact date on it. You may have noticed that the trees have been removed that are in the way, so not just in front of the new house that's under construction, but also in the old house. So steps are being taken, but the actual delivery date, if we're going to put the forms up, we want to get it done before Memorial Day, and so I think we're just trying to make sure that if we start it, we can finish it so we have a clean sidewalk for the Memorial Day Parade, and the clock is ticking on that. So we'll know very shortly whether we're going to hit that date or...
Well, when we, as the council is aware, on the work plan is to do a scooter policy review. And we plan to come to the council this summer with recommendations on policy in this area. When the question was just asked of various city officials, what does the code speak about scooters today? The determination of the zoning administrator, among others, was the code doesn't address it, but it does prohibit certain uses, commercial uses, without specific approval. And scooters would be a commercial use, and so, under that reading of the zoning ordinance, it's not allowed use. So, that is the state of play right now. You know, there have been a few scooters that have shown up in town. It hasn't been the situation that you've seen in Alexandria or in other places where all of a sudden there's just a huge unloading of trucks of scooters. That has not happened. Those other cities have found it helpful to have codes that don't allow it so that it can be regulated appropriately. And so, we're looking at what our peer jurisdictions are doing. There are really good models out there, and we think that we'll be able to adopt the best practices.
So, until we have that discussion, we're not allowing the commercial usage of scooters in the city?
We're not actively enforcing it. I think we're reserving the ability to enforce it if we had essentially kind of a nuisance drop of scooters that were causing a problem. I think that would be my best interpretation of the way we'd handle it right now.
Because I do think they're organically showing up in the city, and I think, you know, they have, they serve a useful purposes, especially as we kind of connect people to the metro stations or other transit. So, I do think we should figure out a way to make them happen here, but safely.
That's right.
And then, on that note, there were actually two high-profile pedestrian and cyclist deaths in DC, so we're talking about safety. And so, you know where I'm going to go with this, is sidewalks and crosswalks. Any update on our Virginian Park sidewalk, given the regional attention on pedestrian safety?
So, we are proceeding with that. I'll need to get back with you on the exact date on it. You may have noticed that the trees have been removed that are in the way. So, not just in front of the new houses under construction, but also in the old house. So, steps are being taken, but the actual delivery date, if we're going to put the forms up, we want to get it done before Memorial Day. And so, I think we're just trying to make sure that if we start it, we can finish it so we have a clean sidewalk for the Memorial Day parade, and the clock is ticking on that. So, we'll know very shortly whether we're going to hit that date or whether we'll need to push it to Jim.
So, my second request on that note is, in the budget, we've kind of allocated money for spot improvements and kind of other kind of pedestrian and safety things. I'd love to spend some work session time talking about what's next after the Virginian Park sidewalk. I think there's probably input from probably pedestrians on like the Tiger Trail we talked about with TJ or other high commercial areas where we see a lot of pedestrians, whether we can focus our attention on those areas.
We'll do that. We'll schedule that. I think staff would like council's input on the use of that $100,000 for spot improvement.
Terrific. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, we do need to get, I was not aware that we were actually, we had some on the books prohibiting scooters. I think we should really get on that in the near future and see what we can do. Ms. Hardy had mentioned Happy Earth Day to everyone. I'd like to mention Happy Birthday to Ross, Mr. Lipton House, and Mr. Shields, both who've had recent birthdays. So, we've got the daily double here, and I don't know who'd like to start. Happy Birthday? All right, there we go. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Ross. Happy Birthday to you.
All right, let's move on to the report of the City Manager.
That's right, yeah, thank you. It was actually, it was a big one from a half a century. So, on my report, the main thing I want to lead off with is a big thank you to the City Council and to the taxpayers for a new City Hall. And staff spent last Friday packing up out of 400 North Washington and spent today unpacking in the newly renovated and expanded City Hall. And we think the public will find it to be a very welcoming, bright, and safe place to do public business. And that was the goal from the beginning, and we think we've accomplished that. The building keeps its traditional exterior, with the exception of the back, which has a nice modern facade to it and a garage that will be screened by greenery and a green roof. But on the interior, what you will see is the latest and all the things that make a building up to date in terms of the temperature control, the lighting, and the systems that are inside that building. We are working on the commissioning right now, including the lead commissioning, following the City Council's policy of at least lead silver. In short, we're delighted to be back home. So, thanks, everybody, for the patience during this time, and to all the City employees for the hard work in packing up and unpacking. And a couple of announcements, what we're planning for is the council's first meeting in council chambers would be May 28th. So, we anticipate kind of a small ribbon cutting for council chambers for that meeting. And then, a larger, kind of all, everybody's invited, including the judiciary from Arlington County and all of her partners. That is scheduled for Thursday, June 6th, the day after graduation, for those who have kids graduating.
And that is in the morning.
And that would be in the morning?
Yes.
So, more to come on that and publicity for that. The purpose of tonight's really is just to say thank you. And also, a particular thank you for three key staff members. Cindy Mester, for all your work on this project. Mike Whitfield, for steering this all the way through. Karen Battle, for working the procurement. And then, our own George Mason High School graduate Lionel Millard, who was her on-the-ground project manager and just did a wonderful job. So, thank you is really the main message. Two other things to report. For the campus project, our Friday Campus Coordinating Committee is scheduled for this Friday, April 26th at 7:30 a.m. in the school board offices. And that will also be followed by our Sunday series, which will be on Monday, actually, not on Sunday. We're rescheduling it to Monday, April 29th at 7:30 in this room. Sunday was a conflict with the PTA's garden tour, so we've rescheduled that public meeting to Monday night. And that is a really important meeting. We're going to do a lot to promote that meeting. We already have. But that will be our last Sunday series before the request for council to take final consideration on the special exception application and the comprehensive agreement. So, we hope to see everybody here for that next Monday in this room. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Unless there's any other comments, why don't we move to business on the agenda? Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have the three budget items, and I'll call those together. We have TO 19-02, Ordinance Fixing and Determining the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues and Appropriating Funds for the Fiscal Year 2020 General Fund, School Operating Fund, School Community Service Fund, School Food Service Fund, Cable Access Fund, Sewer Fund, and Stormwater Fund. We have TO 19-03, Ordinance Fixing and Determining the FY 2020 to FY 2025 Capital Improvements Program Budget and Appropriating Expenditure and Revenue Funds for the Fiscal Year 2020. And we have TO 19-04, Ordinance Setting the Rate of Tax Levy on Real Estate for Tax Year 2020 and on Personal Property, Machinery and Tools, and All Other Property Segregated by Law for Local Taxation in the City of Falls Church, Virginia for Tax Year 2019.
All right, before we get started, I would like to make a short disclosure. I make the following statement before City Council's consideration of the FY 2020 budget. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2019. Should that be FY 2020 budget? I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. Ms. Connolly?
I make the following statement before City Council's consideration of the FY 2020 budget items. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2020 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Charter, and members of the council. Based on the City Council guidance, in December 2018, the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget was presented by the City Manager in March, which does not propose an increase on the real estate tax rate. And both the general government and the school transfers are within the organic revenue growth projection. Major issues addressed in this budget include maintaining excellent government services in schools, funding the adopted capital plan with increased development activity in the city, and funding cities' obligation for WAMADA while not increasing the real estate tax rate. So, minor changes were discussed, as proposed by staff, that were discussed at the last work session that include adjustments to our NBT adjustments and reallocating that money differently for WAMADA increases and a grant, $10,000 grant matched to TDM grant that we have for fiscal year 2020 that we got notified. Other than that, there are no other changes proposed, and that winds up my report. And the total budget amount is $99.29 million proposed for fiscal year 19. It's here for a second reading for council and adoption for tonight.
Now, I just want to thank the public for their participation in the process. We've had one town hall meeting in this room and two public hearings prior to this point. The major feature of this budget is the increase in debt service to cover the library and the George Mason High School. And we're covering that in the manner that was described as part of the bond referendum when that was approved by the voters in 2017.
All right, is anyone else going to be speaking, Mr. Shields? That's it? All right. So, I'm going to go ahead and open up to public comment, then I'll ask for City Council comment or question. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to any of the three items that the clerk has called? Seeing none, the matter is closed. The public, now the matter's with council. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Yes, Ms. Hardy?
Where do we end up on the spot bonus? Did we find money in the budget to take care of that? I think Ms. Heath had sent around kind of the existing program that needed funding.
Yeah, there was an estimated request of $5,000, which is not funded, but expected to be absorbed with any vacancy savings that are within the.
It's not a request that you need us to figure out?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, I definitely want to support that, and I want to make sure we do find a way to do it, given the HR discussion we had a couple of weeks ago. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I've got just a comment.
All right.
Not getting up that easy. So, I've made some fairly impassioned arguments over the last couple of months related to tax relief and to the woman in the audience and others who've been in support of expanding tax relief. I want to be clear on a couple of things. We have a deferral program in place, which is effectively a relief program. And the debate that's been taking place up here, and maybe it's just a debate that's one-sided from my standpoint, is expanding relief, which is an outright abatement. I want to say I personally recognize the need to address affordability in Falls Church. However, I feel like expanding our abatement program, which is effectively full relief as opposed to deferral, is something that just isn't warranted right now within this budget, especially given the capital debt, the capital improvements that we're undertaking. And the number of unfunded needs that we have been provided, both within city and schools, to contemplate expanding an outright tax relief program in one of the highest real estate assessment, real estate value, net worth from real estate in the state of Virginia and probably in the country, to me seems, and I've used this word before, a bit tone deaf. My recommendation would be to continue the deferral program, which is, in effect, tax relief for all of those that qualify, and remove the expanded tax relief amount that is the outright abatement. Because if we're going to offer tax relief and outright abatement of property taxes for one section of the demographic here in Falls Church, I feel like that that relief should be applied equitably across everyone. So, my motion would be to take the expanded budget amount for the tax relief program, keep deferral in place, but the expanded amount, and reduce the overall property tax rate fractionally to offset that accordingly. So, if it's a $63,000 increase, if we have that money to offer outright to give away an abatement of taxes, I think that should be equitably spread out amongst all of the citizens in the community to relieve that pressure and address affordability across the board. That's my motion.
My second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. And the motion is to take $63,000 out of the budget and in turn, reduce the tax rate by whatever that is, like a fifth of a penny or something like that. I don't know what that number is.
I just did the math. It's 420 is a penny on the tax rate?
428,000 is a penny.
Okay, so it's.
It's roughly a fourth.
Is .14. So, .15 cents.
Okay.
For the median tax bill, what does that equate to? Sorry to make you do math on this.
So, it's.
700.
It'd be $10. If I've got that right. If a penny is $70 for the average taxpayer, then .15 is $10.
The other thing I was going to ask about is, I think we had discussed that we don't actually need to decide on the mechanics of the program change tonight. And I think when the treasurer was last here, she said there was a future work session scheduled where we actually would go through the details of how exactly what levers we would change, whether it was the AV amounts, the income limits, et cetera. And I think that was scheduled for a future work session. Is that still on the plan?
Yeah, the request is that that council complete first and second reading by July 1st.
So, tonight, we're just talking about appropriating kind of to the overall program, but the mechanics of the actual program itself, we have a month and a half to solve.
All right, do we have other comment, either on this or any other matter relating to the budget? Vice Mayor Connolly?
I do support increasing the senior tax relief and abatement program. Last year, when we sat here and talked about the budget, that was one of the things that council asked Ms. Acosta to look into as a way to make sure that we were looking after all of our citizens. And having sat on that task force and looked through the list of the 40 or 50 people that benefit. Each story is different, so some people are sitting on a really, you know, as Mr. Lipton House says, a house that's worth a lot of money, and some people aren't, and it's, every single story is different. And I think it's really important that we're making sure that we're looking out for all of our citizens. So, I'm glad that we will have time to look at this in work session between now and the end of June. And maybe we can tighten it up a little bit, but I'm happy to support that $63,000 appropriation as written in the budget.
Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I supported the motion. I have long said that I think deferral is the appropriate remedy here, rather than allowing heirs to benefit from the increase in property values that all of our citizens contributed to. I understand there may be a liquidity issue, and so, we can deal with that adequately through deferral. So, for all these reasons, I support the motion and believe it should be dealt with as Councilmember Lipton House has indicated. Thank you.
All right, other comments. Mr. Duncan?
I guess what I want to say is, I think it would be good for us to have a considered conversation about what affordability means, but not tonight. I think there was a process in place to examine that, and we did that and got a proposal from the Treasurer and Budget Finance Committee, and that's what's embedded in the budget as presented. I mean, I think it's, you know, interesting to contemplate whether some folks in the younger generations have a different attitude about what affordability means, you know, how we try to promote that. I agree with Mr. Lipton House's thoughts about the tax rate generally. I think, you know, if there's a story about this budget that maybe has not been written, it's, the big news is we're keeping the tax rate level this year as we undertake all these very ambitious projects. Now, there's a reason that we're able to do that, because many years of effort has gone into getting us where we are tonight. But a similar amount of effort needs to be expended, I think, in the coming year to really wrestle with the question of whether we want to do what every other jurisdiction around us does more generously than we do in terms of providing tax relief for seniors. I mean, as I read the charts, we are the most stingy jurisdiction, you know, in the area. And is that where we want to be? Maybe it is where we want to be. Maybe we want to be more restrictive in that. Anyway, I think it would be an interesting and useful discussion. Appreciate folks who, you know, have written these very long letters explaining why they think that we're dim-witted or tone deaf or whatever the word is. But, you know, we've really looked at this pretty carefully. I mean, I understand what's going to happen to my house when I'm ready to sell it. It's going to get torn down and replaced with a house that's going to cost a million some dollars. And obviously, that's going to throw off more tax revenues than the house I live in now. And, you know, at the same time, it'll probably have higher public service costs by a factor of two or three. So, you know, we've thought about all these things as we've come to our position on this issue, I think. But I do look forward to a discussion about our affordability program. And I think it's important for us to be in close communication with the people who avail themselves of the current program and ask them, you know, point blank, if we shifted from abatement to deferral completely, how would that affect you? You who use the program now. And we should go out and find people who might be on the edge of deciding whether to get into the current program that we have now and ask them, you know, if we made the program more generous, would you be likely to stay in place for another five or 10 years? And do some real, you know, information gathering on that. I mean, I'm looking forward to doing that in the current campaign season, just talking with folks anecdotally. So, I just want to close by expressing my appreciation to the work of the Budget and Finance Committee in examining this and all the other issues that brought us the budget that we have here tonight, which is providing a responsible amount of relief on taxes by maintaining a level rate while still affording us the opportunity to make, you know, investments that are important for the future of the city.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Great, thank you. So, taking a step back, kind of using the $10,000.
So taking a step back, kind of using the 10,000-foot view, I wanted to appreciate, also echo Mr. Duncan's appreciation for staff and our partnership with the superintendent, school board, and actually, really good budget. So pretty remarkable, the fact that we're able to kind of take on this big CIP and actually not have to raise the tax rate this year with a lot of planning that we've done in the past year. So thank you all for the hard work and the partnership in making this happen. I think overall, out of a $99 million budget, the fact that we're squabbling over $60,000 is probably a good testament. So normally, we fight over a penny. This year, we're fighting over far less. I've probably written and talked about affordability a lot, and so I'm not going to belabor the point. And I've shared my point of view and what I feel about the senior tax relief. But I do think that in light of the fact that we have time to actually work out the mechanics of how the program needs to work, and there's probably a good compromise option on figuring out how to change a couple of those levers, monitor the program before changing everything, that might be something that we can take on in that May work session we talked about. I do think that allocating the $60,000 as requested is an important commitment to kind of the generational diversity and the values that we espouse. So I will support the budget as proposed.
All right, other comments?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm expected to say something about this. So not letting an opportunity slide by here, I want to thank the school system, the school board, and the school superintendent for working so diligently for so long to ensure that we have a budget we can all live with. I am mildly disappointed that we have those in our community here that believe the issue is one of fiscal responsibility and that they're not actually sitting here. So it's easy for them to say that the kids that would be in these houses vacated by those that can't afford to stay here anymore bring this intangible value, and they spend all their money in the city. I just don't believe that to be true. I think it's remarkable that those that have gotten so much from the city in terms of zoning variances or ability to have their own kids in the school, just can't see 63K to help some elderly people make it through another year in this very expensive city. They get these people calling themselves progressives. I just don't know how that label applies. So I think the motion before us is to vote to eliminate part of this budget and give it back to taxpayers. I would not vote for that. I think we have a great budget here, as currently written. And should this current motion fail, I'd be happy to move adoption of TO 1902 as written. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Connolly, do you have something else you wanted to say?
I want to echo Ms. Hardy's appreciation for all the staff of the city and the school board for pulling together a really good budget this year. I looked back at our December 11 budget guidance statement, which is all crossed out and noted over, but the thing that stands out to me is down here at the bottom, we spent first on people. And I think that's a really important element of this budget that we're spending on our staff, and we're spending on our community members and the children and elderly, and that's a really important part of Falls Church. So I thank you for all that. Thank you for the hard work.
All right, anything else? I'll echo my colleagues' thanks to everyone. I do think this budget is a great investment in our future. We're investing in schools, we're investing in infrastructure, facilities like the city hall, the library. We really are, I think, making a down payment on a great future for Falls Church. So I will support the budget, the main budget. I understand concern about abatement versus deferral, and I had asked the treasurer for some more information, some empirical data, as to whether that actually influences behavior, which I have not yet seen, and I would like to see. But for the moment, I'm willing to go on the recommendation of the board that studied this with the idea that maybe we'll revisit this in a little bit greater detail coming forward and seeing what we can figure out then. But at the present, I'm willing to go forward with the budget that's been proposed. Do we have a second motion? Or we can go ahead and hear your motion and go ahead and vote on that and see if there are any other motions? So we do have a motion on the table?
Yes. A motion and a second, and that was for Mr. Lickenhouse's motion?
All right, so why don't we go ahead and vote on that, and we'll move on and see whether that passes or not?
Okay. Ms. Connolly?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
No.
And Mayor Charter?
No.
And the motion fails five to two.
Two to five?
Two to five.
All right, do we have a second motion?
Was that a motion that you made before?
I did not.
Okay.
I moved to adopt TO 19-02.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
If I might just make a general comment on the budget, my comments were related only to the amendment. I want to second the comments made by others that I think this is a fundamentally sound budget. It deals with our regional issues, which happily weren't as bad as they could have been. A lot of work went into that. It supports public safety, maintains the schools, and helps us address infrastructure issues. So I look forward to voting for this, this budget as is. I preferred one different approach on one issue. That is what it is, and overall, the budget is a very good budget otherwise. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a general comment as well.
All right.
If you don't mind. So echoing Councilman Snyder's comments, I would have preferred to see this budget put together slightly differently as it relates to these programs. I do appreciate the fact that we'll be talking about affordability and the mechanics associated with that and the true math behind tax relief, abatement, deferral. I will say, just personally, having spoken to the difficulties of last year's process, the thanks to the schools specifically, as well as the city, in working towards a more collaborative and, I would say, revenue-share-focused approach, I think, is light years ahead of at least what I saw during my first budget session. And this has just really, really come a long way. So I do think it's a good budget. I really do. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
And motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion regarding the second item, the capital improvements program?
Mr. Mayor, I moved to adopt TO 19-03.
Second.
All right, before we take the vote, I have called for public comment. I just want to make it clear that the request for public comment was on all three of these matters. Anyone who wishes to speak on any of these matters is welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
And the motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion regarding the last item?
I move to adopt TO 19-04.
Second.
All right.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay, Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the next item.
We have TR 19-16, Resolution to Authorize the City Manager to Execute on Behalf of the City a Standard Project Agreement for $15.7 million in NVTA Regional Revenue Funding for the West Falls Church and Joint Campus Revitalization District Multimodal Transportation Project ID Number 2018-051-1.
All right, Mr. Shields?
If I could defer to Cindy Mester, the deputy city manager, for this item. If you're prepared, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Shields. This is the execution of the grant that is in the adopted CIP that you just approved. This is the regional money that we've spoken about in the past in terms of providing important network and facilities adjacent to the 10-acre project for economic development. It will be done in collaboration with the developer, and we will bring staff resources on to ensure that the project is managed and timely and meets NVTA requirements. Be glad to talk about any more further details, but that's a refresher of what's before you this evening. It's an exciting milestone to hit this point, which takes us a very long way in the state code requirement for all localities to receive their 10-year long-term benefit fair share, which the city had not received yet because of only having bus shelters and some small projects. So getting the $15.7 gets us on par with the 10-year benefit owed to us for the taxpayers who are contributing to this regional fund.
All right, thank you much. Are there any comments or questions? Any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of TR 19-16.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Could I just make a couple of comments?
Of course.
First of all, I want to thank Cindy Mester. I want to thank staff. I want to thank members of council for support for this project. This is a very significant allocation of funds, and it took a lot of work to get here. And I know that one of the parties we're interested in working with is Fairfax County, so consider this an expression of goodwill in joint efforts to appropriately design and plan our project that is so essential to the city's future, and keeping in mind the interests of Fairfax County as well. And we'll look forward to working with them cooperatively on this. But I again want to thank everyone involved in this. This is probably the largest singular transportation project we've ever, I think, had. So, and it supports the largest development project we've ever had. So, thanks much.
Mr. Z?
Mayor, I would like to personally thank the leadership of Councilmember Snyder, who has broad knowledge and influence in this area, that has worked diligently both in front and behind the scenes to bring the spout and for working with staff to ensure that we have a sound proposal that was recognized as being very important to the region.
All right, I would echo those thanks as well, particularly to Mr. Snyder, but also Ms. Mester and the rest of the staff. This is a big deal for the city. I mean, in a lot of ways, if we weren't getting this grant, taxpayers would be paying this money out to make improvements around the west end site. And so this is going to make it more walkable and tie this project in with our neighbors and with Metro and really do the kind of development we want to do up there. So it's a big deal for the city, I think. Unless there's any other comments, why don't we go ahead and take our vote?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. And I'm going to ask whether any member of council wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda. All right, Mr. Manager, would you like to read the consent agenda item?
There are two items on consent. The first is authorization for the city manager on behalf of the city to sign an agreement with James River Solutions LLC for unleaded fuel and E85, which is our biofuel, not our biodiesel, but this is the biofuel for unleaded gas, in a contract amount up to $200,000 per fiscal year, and to renew the contract annually for up to four additional one-year terms, subject to annual appropriation of funds for that purpose. We procure our gasoline for all of our operations through a joint purchase agreement with COG to get the best possible price, and this will give us authority to proceed with that. Then the second item is authorization for the city manager on behalf of the city to sign an agreement with AM Liner East for on-call sewer rehabilitation construction services in a contract amount up to $800,000 per fiscal year, and to renew the contract annually for two additional one-year terms, subject to annual appropriation of funds. The funding for this contract is out of the Sanitary Sewer Fund, and this is to continue our annual process of lining our sewer pipes, which extends their life and prevents inflow and infiltration, which is a very serious environmental problem, and that inflow gets to the sewage treatment plant. That's it for these two items.
All right, any member of the public wish to comment on these items? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I wish to move all the items on the consent calendar.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, let's keep on moving. Other business, a motion regarding changing the public hearing date for resolution. Mr. Shields?
So this item, the council, when it gave first consideration and referred out to boards and commissions, the special exception entitlement for mixed-use development for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project, they set a date of May 28 for the final public hearing and final consideration of that application. In discussion with the development team, with staff, and with the school administration, the desire now is to seek to achieve that final consideration two weeks earlier on May 13. This would allow the schools to proceed with their contractual notice to proceed with the Gilbane Sand Tech Design Team and allow them to make good use of the summer for construction activities. So that's what this motion is for. We're working very hard to try to achieve that date, and we still have a lot of work to do. But this will give the council the ability to take action on the 13th.
All right, any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Are there any questions or comments from council? Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, so what if we're not ready? What if the documents aren't in place? That's my concern. And while I'll probably abstain from this motion, I'm sensitive to the school request, but I'm also sensitive to the overwhelming prudential aspects of this.
Well, that's right. This is probably the most important comprehensive agreement and land case in the city's history. So if we're not ready, then the council can defer to a later date, and presumably that would be to May 28. And so the council would retain that ability and that option on May 13, if in your judgment you're not ready to take final action on this. So that's what this motion would allow.
How soon, since this is a request to move up and reduce the amount of time we have to look at things, when are we going to get final documents for us to look at and for the public to get?
Well, I can't promise the exact date. Our goal would be by the work session, May 6, to have the documents in form for everyone to read through. But again, we're working very hard, and it's going to be a Herculean task.
Yeah, this is why I'm going to abstain on this motion. I just, I really want to make sure that we all have time, the public has time, to know what it is we're voting on and what we're committing to. It's hard for me to imagine that a week is a sufficient amount of time for that. So, anyway, I understand how others could disagree. I also understand the schools would like us to do this.
All right, any other comment? Or do we have a motion?
I move to change the scheduled public hearing date for TR 19-08 from May 28, 2019 to May 13, 2019, and advertise the same according to law.
All right, do we have a second?
Second, and may I say a word?
Excuse me?
Second, and could I?
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay. Yeah, I second the motion. So I'm interpreting this as just a procedural matter. If we're ready, we'll go, and if we're not ready, we won't go. And we'll know well in advance, well, we'll know in advance whether we're ready to go or not. I mean, if we don't vote for this, then we know that we are putting it until the end of May, and that, we know, will slow the school process. By voting this way tonight, we at least give ourselves a chance to move on a schedule that the schools have suggested to us, and yet still enable us to do our due diligence, right? And there's nothing that's changed about the nature of the CA, right? We're still going to have, even after we sign it, a year and a half of extremely detailed community input and staff analysis of the deal before any ground gets broken. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is just to avoid a situation where you would want to take action on the 13th, and the public wouldn't, would have been told it was not till the 28th and would have not have the notice. So this gives notice that we're going to try to do it on the 13th, but you still would be able to put it off. try to do it on the 13th, but you still would be able to put it off if necessary at that time.
Okay, thanks. So, basically, this seems to me to be a vote that tells the public, "All right, sit up, pay attention. You know, we're going to get serious about this, uh, even more serious than we've been in the next, uh, 35 some days." And so, don't check out, uh, if you're interested in this, um, uh, pay attention and mark that date on your calendar, uh, as a time when we hope we can take action.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Let's go ahead and move to the vote then.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Abstain.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero with one abstention. Thank you.
All right. Is there any business not on the agenda? Any standing regional committees or council liaison reports that people would like to make tonight? How about council member comments? Uh, Ms. Connolly, then Mr. Duncan.
I shared with all of you a flyer from the Falls Church Education Foundation inviting everyone to attend the Home and Garden Tour, which is Sunday. And there was another invitation that went out via paperless post, and I think it didn't get to city council members because she said she didn't get any responses from any of us. So, look for that tomorrow to respond to for an, uh, a reception after the Home and Garden Tour.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Licken.
Just two quick things. Uh, the economic, excuse me, is supposed to meet on Thursday morning at nine o'clock in a room in the new city, in the old new city. What are we calling it? The city hall, just to be named later. I'm, which room? Dogwood or something? Anyway, let us know which room it's meeting in. The second thing, uh, in today's morning announcements, I think it was, there was a, a printout, uh, a one-pager about, uh, single stream recycling in the schools and, uh, what can be recycled and what should not be put in the recycling at the schools. Uh, of course, plastic bags shouldn't be. Anyway, my contribution to Earth Day is to confess that I haven't the foggiest idea really whether the stuff that I'm putting in my recycling at home is actually, you know, doing any good at all, or if I am polluting the stream by putting something in there that I shouldn't. So, if this, this is actually a helpful sheet that was in morning announcements with pictures and things that are, are allowed and that aren't not. If this matches up with the city's processes, could somebody look at that? And if there's a citywide approach to this, that would be helpful. If the schools are doing something different than we are, then that's something I'd like to know, too.
There is a citywide approach, and we have put out door hangers in the last year or so of kind of the instructions of what's recyclable and what is not. But that, that policy is, is in flux for reasons that we've discussed. Um, and we do have a staff working group that's going to bring recommendations, um, on a potential change to our recycling policy, and we want to sort of evaluate the pros and cons of that. Um, but that's coming to council very shortly.
Okay, that's fine. As long as there's something in the works, that, that would be helpful. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Z?
You know, to that point, um, while taking advantage of the city's Restaurant Week, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I noticed that the restaurants in town, um, are only giving you plastic straws if you ask for them now. So, just look for that. Um, at every opportunity, I, uh, I asked for the manager to come forward, and he thinks I want to complain about the meal for the price, and I said, "Want to compliment him on the lack of straws." They tell me it's a business decision. I applaud that. Uh, and I urge all those owners and operators of restaurants in the city to adopt that practice if they haven't already.
Thank you for bringing that topic forward, Councilmember Duncan.
All right. Unless there's anything else, but there is. Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot. Um, so, um, last week I submitted some questions about the economic development project, and I asked for written responses. I'm wondering when those will be received. Uh, that's question number one. Question number two, um, will the citizens at the next, um, work session on the schools and the economic development there in order to fund the new school, will they be informed about the differences in the proposal from what was publicly agreed to and discussed versus now? Thank you.
Well, I would just say that there's, there have been no changes to what was publicly discussed with the amendment to the IAA that was done, um, in, in May, or, I'm sorry, back in whenever that was, in, in February. Um, we are going to have a discussion tonight about, um, a potential change to the configuration of, of the land. Um, and once that discussion is had, we'll immediately go public, um, starting, we believe, you know, with the Friday Campus Coordinating Committee meeting and the Sunday series on Monday. So, our goal is to get information out publicly as quickly as possible. We also think it's appropriate to first to discuss some negotiating points with council in closed session before that public discussion ensues.
All right.
And, and just one other question was on the, on the written questions, um, and written responses. We've received those. Uh, we're looking at them, uh, closely, and we'll share the responses with the full city council. But, you know, those, those are questions that are, are right on point for the work that we're engaged in.
Okay. Are there any other, other council comments or requests? If not, let's move on to the approval of the minutes. Mr. Duncan?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, on the-
You had your two sets of glasses on.
I do. On the, on the, which everyone makes fun of me about, but I'm cheap, so that's-
Nothing will escape.
That's the story, and I'm sticking to it. On the minutes of, uh, Monday, February 11th, 2019, so on line 178, we are going to have demands from the develop, I think we are going to have demands from the developer. And, uh, actually, line 193, that's actually a question I'd like to take up the EDC, so I'll bring that up Thursday. Um, and the only other thought that I had, and this is a question to the clerk, some folks are identified with their address and others are not. Is that because they don't always provide you with their address? Or, I think it would be nice if we could always have people's addresses listed after their names, just to know where they're coming from, literally.
Right. I, I do not provide an address if it's not provided to me, because that's a choice for the person that's sending the message.
Hmm, really? That's interesting. I thought it was sort of matter of public record. I thought our policy was that the mayor asks for the address to be stated. So, my preference is that we always try to get folks who come to us to give us their addresses, so it helps us understand where they are. At any rate, um, with that amendment, I move adoption of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, February 11th, 2019.
All right. Any other comments? Or do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
All right. Well, let's just do it. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. All right. How about the next?
Mayor, I have to abstain on that one.
Ah, Dan abstains.
One abstention, Mr. Z.
Uh, the minutes of Monday, September 18th, September 10th, 2018, on line 62. I think the word that wants to be used is incidents, not incidences. Incident is something that occurs, and incidences sort of relates to frequency. Something that happened is an incident. Something that occurs to some frequency is an incidence. With that change, I move adoption of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, September 10th, 2018.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. All right. Anything else to be said before we go into closed session?
opposed to go in a closed session. If not, I'm going to read a motion and see if anyone's supportive of it, um, about going into closed session. Upon a motion made by council member-
Connolly.
And seconded by council member-
Hardy.
Hardy. And passed by a vote of city council, council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash 3711A 28 for discussion or consideration by city council of information subject to the exclusion of subdivision 11 of Section 2.2 dash 3705. Point six, in particular, information provided by a private entity, the city council pursuant to the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002, where disclosure of such information would adversely affect the bargaining position or financial interest of the city or the private entity, uh, the West Falls Church Campus Project pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash 3711A 8, consultation with legal counsel employed by or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, acquisition of fellow's property. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Z?
Yes.
Tarter? Yep. All right. It is 8:55. We will take a short break to get the cameras down and go into closed session. All right. We're coming out of closed session. Upon a motion made by council member-
Connolly.
Seconded by council member-
Duncan.
And passed by a vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lickenhouse?
Yeah.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Z?
Yes.
Tarter? Yep. It is 10:53. This is certification. Upon a motion made by council member Duncan, Duncan, and seconded by council member Z. And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, it was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by city council. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Z?
Yeah.
Tarter? Yep. All right. Anything else to talk about?
Moves adjourned.
All right. Let's do it. Good day.